Welcome, everybody. I called to order the regular meeting of the Minnetonka City Council Monday, December 19th at 5:30 PM. Item one on the agenda. Please call the roll.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Yes, here.
Janzer?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padraig Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. After my letter to the city of Minnetonka this weekend, I reached out and pulled some strings and asked a very special guest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Saint Nick.
I'm on the good list.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think, Mr. Saint Nick-
Mayor Ross, may I?
You may. You may have the podium.
So, I often get asked, "Santa, have you lived in Minnetonka your whole life?" And I proudly respond, "Not yet." Mayor Ross and I were first introduced in first grade at Edison School back in 1970, when he and I both had bangs, and we could fit into a pair of 23-inch waist corduroy jeans by Levi. We've got a long history. So, I would like to thank all of you for having me be here tonight. Council members, Mayor Ross, I want you to know, even if you don't believe in Santa, Santa believes in all of you. I thank you for leading our city. And with that, good night, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Santa.
I got a pretty thick file on you this year. Should talk soon.
Security.
Lots of coal.
All right, moving on to item number three, the mayor's report. Just a few of the meetings that I attended since my last report. Spent some time with some second graders from John Hoven Elementary, had a Task Force 21 meeting, a Team Minnetonka meeting on the Minnetonka Air Force Base. Blizzard conditions canceled a couple of the events. I was able to be the keynote speaker at the MSU Fall Graduation, along with a Minnetonka Area Legislative Round Table this last week, along with discussions about the CTE, and had the honor of riding the holiday train from Harvey to Minnetonka. We were greeted by a wonderful crowd out there, and I think it was minus four-degree temperatures as the holiday train rolled into Minnetonka on Saturday. If there are no questions, we will move on to item number four, and that is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Be happy to answer any questions with regards to the city manager memo. As you see, with the meetings attended and tonight's agenda, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Trying to keep things moving forward, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone from the council has anything outlined in the report. If not, and I hear any questions, this is our last official regular meeting of the year, and I just want to thank the council and the staff and the citizens for a great 2022. It's been a very busy, productive year, from handling blizzards to getting key projects like the M-building and the tracks and CTE and a bunch of other things moving forward in a positive way. And that wouldn't be possible without the engagement of the citizens, the leadership of the council, and the dedicated work of our staff that have been working really hard this year. So with that, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and look forward to 2023.
Thank you, Harold. Any questions? If not, let's move on to item number five, and that is the city attorney report.
Mayor, members of the council, today we have Special City Attorney Shane Gettle with us today, and he is here to present on some upcoming legislative session topics that he's going to assist the city with during this next legislative session.
Thank you for that lead-in. It's great to be here with you this evening. I thought I would start by just saying that I've been working with Tom and a number of others from the city of Minnetonka to set up the expectations that we would have for continuing to receive state funding for the flood control project. We've been working on that all summer and have had a number of meetings with key legislators. It's a little bit of a guessing game, quite honestly, to try to determine where various people might end up in terms of legislative leadership. We did our best during the summer months to start those conversations with folks that we knew would be on appropriations in both the Senate and the House, as well as with the Department of Water Resources and the governor's office. And I think we're in pretty good shape. And let me just report on what our overall objective, our ask has been, and I think it's been overall well-received. And that is to say, you know, our goal in the past sessions has been really just focused on getting phase one done. And now it's time to sort of look ahead and say, how do we get this whole project completed on a timely basis? And so, what we've put in front of people was an idea, a concept, to try to get the end in sight, because if we just kept on the current path right now, this project doesn't get completed until we're in the 2040s. So, we put together a plan that local funding could keep up with, but that would also put an end in sight. And we could get this done in five biennia or 10 years in terms of getting the funding all in place, and then finish up by a completion date in 2035. So that gives us, you know, horizon here to look at. So what we're seeking is to increase the funding, the average funding, that this project has been getting to something more akin to what we got in the last biennium, and try to move that forward. The plan that we've been saying is if we can get 76.1 million per biennium from the state over the next five biennium, we can complete the project in 2035. And there's also potentially some room to front-load that.
Five or 10?
10.
10.
10 years, five biennium.
Okay, sorry.
Five legislators, 10 years, right. So 76.1 million per biennium is what we're seeking. That's been pretty well-received. In the governor's budget, you may have heard his address, he talked about 600 million for water infrastructure. When you break that down, he's actually taking the base budget for flood control that's not Fargo, lifting it from 45 million to about 115 million, and that's to cover the entire state. But there's a lot of dollars in there that I think, in his budget, that can help support what I just described. We're also going to test to see, in this good times that the state seems to be having, if there's some room to go higher than that and front-load that somewhere north of 76.1 million, because we've got a shovel rudder project out here that can move forward. So we have visited with, ultimately with the two chairmen of the appropriations, the House and the Senate. We accomplished that actually during the summer and fall. We had a lot of legislators in Minnetonka in September, when Water Topics brought their meeting here. We had a tour of the flood control project, and we had some really good conversations with a number of legislators about this, plus a full presentation to the interim Water Topics Committee. And then finally, the new Senate Majority Leader, we were able to meet with him just a few weeks ago during the organizational session. And I think we're in pretty good shape with leadership in terms of this overall message of trying to get this on a five-biennia plan to see the end. So that has been consuming a lot of our time and attention in recent months and weeks, and I feel very good about where we're at in the overall thing. I also want to mention that we had a number of legislators gathered here last week, right around the tail end of the organizational session. The chamber, Minnetonka Area Chamber EDC hosted an event, and we had a number of legislators there, and I was able to touch base with a couple more of them, one-on-one, and give a report on how this is going. So I think we're in good shape with Minnetonka Area legislators, too, in terms of getting everybody on board with this idea and this plan. We've got some good appropriators from Minnetonka on both the Senate and the House, Karen Krebsba, as well as Randy Burkhart is now on appropriations. And so those are two key senators that we're working with, and this bill starts in the Senate this time. So we'll try to shape it up there. And of course, David Hoag is the Majority Leader. So we've really got some good leaders from Minnetonka on the Senate side. On the House side, we'll be working with Randy Schobinger and Larry Blue, who are the Minnetonka appropriators. And we've also teed this up with a number of other key members of the House. So I'm optimistic. You know, there's no guarantee in politics, but I'm optimistic that we've laid the groundwork for a solid presentation on getting, you know, now a fixed date on the map to get the state committed to, and then perhaps some legislative intent that surrounds this to move it forward. And I think at the same time, we've had great cooperation from the Suris River Joint Board in putting this plan together. So it's been a pleasure working with you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've made this your top priority, and I've heard you in many meetings communicate that to the legislators that we've been meeting with. So I wanted to give the report on that. And of course, I represent your interests at the legislature in a number of ways, just mainly monitoring bills, keeping city officials informed about what bills might impact the city in some way, shape, or form, and giving an opportunity to respond on that. I did try to get into the legislative tracking system as recently as this morning, and it's not up and running yet, and so I wasn't able to pull out any bills yet. But they can be prefiled right now by legislators, and they can be filed, quite honestly, through the first three weeks of January before we kind of settle into what the legislative session will look like. Some of the big topics that will dominate this session, though, are income tax relief is already on the agenda, school funding, and the subsequent relief that people might feel in property taxes. If the state takes up more of the share of local funding there, it might be, will be a big topic. Pension reform, moving, funding all of the defined benefit participants that are out there, but the governor's advertised and a number of key legislators have advertised that they want to get the state system out of that defined benefits plan and a defined contribution plan going forward, which means you've got to fund the defined benefits fully, make sure that those obligations are honored. So I think those are three big topics for the session. And we just want to make sure that we keep the eye on the ball with respect to this as the number-one legislative priority, and try to move everything else forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to entertain a discussion at this point about this, as well as other legislative topics that might be on your mind at this point. A lot of what I do is identify bills that I'm asking you to react to as we get into the session, and that'll start here in the next few weeks. Our session actually starts on Tuesday, the first Tuesday in January, so it'll be January 3rd.
Carrie?
I talked to Senator Burkhart this weekend, and I think all of us have at some points, you know, said daycare funding is important. I know the governor has his committee set up, Bregga Kamis is on it, but like, I really want, like, the legislature to, this is so important to our community, every city in North Dakota, but in Minnetonka in particular, is figuring out, right, not just, you know, affordable daycare, but how we increase the number of providers and flexibility for those. So certainly, I mean, Senator Burkhart is aware of that, but I'm hoping the governor and his task force, or whatever it's called, will put forth some, you know, really good recommendations for solutions to that. And I know probably any of us are, you know, we will wholeheartedly support that and do what we can do to get some ideas and resources flowing into our cities so we can start helping employers who continue to have difficulty with staffing.
I'll definitely watch for any bills along those lines and keep you posted. Steve?
Right. I think it's a very good plan, and I appreciate the work that you and the mayor and the city manager have done. I wanted to echo a little bit what Carrie said before I kind of bring up my own pet concern. I think you can look at numbers, you could look at expert opinion in terms of what lack of daycare does for economic development, but there's also very much a human dimension, and I see that routinely in my practice. I'm a clinical psychologist, and it goes to the point even of people being able to schedule appointments with me because they can get or can't get daycare for their kids. I remember the time when we lost our daycare. My wife and my office manager, you know, spent most of a week walking around town, pounding the pavement, looking for daycare. It is totally disruptive when you lose daycare. It's very hard to find, especially quality daycare that you can rely on. And when you lose it, as happens sometimes, it is devastating. It totally disrupts people's lives, and that's very difficult to quantify. And people, sense of stakers and economic development people probably don't ask about that, but it really makes a huge difference day to day for lots of people in this city, in this state, in this country. And I would urge you and the governor and the legislature not to underemphasize that, just because there's not a number to it. It's very hard to put a number to it. But believe me, it's incredibly destructive if you can't find quality care for your kids. We have lots of people who want to work. We have, what, 10, 20,000 job openings in the state. And if we can help people find quality care for their children, that'll make us much more competitive in every sense. So I just wanted to-
And it goes past, like, 5:00 PM as well.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly.
You know, we have a hospital who is, you know, going to, you know, continue growing, and that's a 24-hour hospital. And, you know, those, even Trinity's Own Daycare isn't open 24 hours, and we have a lot of, you know, services and employers that need 24-hour employees, and they don't have any daycare option right now in the city.
Exactly, exactly. And I think we've seen the movement of the public school system in trying to provide better preschool and after-school care. Our kid was in both. But if your kids aren't in school yet, or if you work not the usual nine-to-five shift, if you don't have a white-collar job sitting at a desk, life can be very challenging. So my plea would be to look at the childcare issue that we have. Now, getting on to my own personal issue, I am very, I'm a forensic psychologist and a diagnostic clinician, and I'm very disturbed by the problem we're having with the state laboratory in terms of processing evidence. This is an issue for law enforcement. I found out recently this year that our detectives are limited to four items, or is it three, that they can send down to Bismarck to the state lab. If you're trying to process a complex crime scene, which we have more and more of, and you're limited to three or four items that they'll research for you, that they'll evaluate, they'll test, they'll get blood data on, that really crimps your investigation. And if we're serious about being a law-and-order state, which I think we are, unfortunately, we're seeing crime rates go up, and the complexity of cases has increased significantly, it's really critical that we have support at the state lab for our law enforcement officers so we can make cases. Now, this isn't just to prosecute people, it's also to exonerate people. You know, I think it's, I don't see our law enforcement people going out and trolling for people, trying to catch them, put them in jail just for the heck of it, or to get an arrest. But I think there is a possibility you could be wrong. And as, again, a forensic clinician, I'm always conscious of potential bias and missing something. And it's very important that we clear the records of honest people who may have gotten caught up in the system. But it's even more important that we prosecute vigorously and aggressively those who have done wrong. And physical evidence is a very important thing. We need that support. I think all of the law enforcement departments, and in connection with that, it's already on the governor's agenda and legislature's agenda, is looking at short and intermediate and long-term efforts to improve recruitment for public safety positions. Over the years, I've screened a lot of law enforcement officers, and it's very disturbing to me, and it's hard to find quality people. It's a challenging job. As a psychologist, I do what I can to support people in that job, to screen them, to get them back to work after some incident. But we need to have people to start with, and that makes a huge difference. Again, day-to-day quality of life, you can rely on the person who shows up for your 911 call, or if you have some doubts about it, that makes a difference. So I think we have to look at some ways of improving our personnel pool and increasing it in terms of law enforcement positions, and also making sure the state crime lab is up to what's asked of it by the local departments.
Thank you, Steve.
Shane, first off, Scott Burlingame, having had a chance to meet you yet, I want to kind of chime in on a few things that have been talked about here already tonight. First off, adding on to what Carrie and Steve said about childcare. I've spoken to so many families, so many business owners, so many, you know, daycare providers that have just over and over again said that it's a massive barrier getting people into that sector. And we cannot create new jobs, no matter how great our economic development activities are. Until we fill that, we're getting the cart in front of the horse. So we have to emphasize that, and I appreciate the fact that the governor and lieutenant governor have emphasized that so much. But I just think that it has to be front and center, not, you know, after everything else is done, we'll talk about that. It has to be up front and center. The other thing I want to ask you is, as a newly-elected alderman here, what can we do throughout the legislative session to help you?
Good question.
Good point.
I think those of you who have worked with me in the past have noted I send up regular reports that you can have access to about the status of any particular legislation. This conversation tonight gives me some categories to look for as well. But I've also, a number of council members in the past have come down to Bismarck and testified on bills that are of, that are of importance to the city, depending on the topic. And now with remote capabilities, that's even easier to do if you have to. And during COVID, of course, relied upon that a lot. I would say that all else being equal, it's always better to be there in person, because you can also then have some conversations, either before or after sometimes, with legislators. And you can't underestimate the value of some of those offline conversations as well. But there'll be plenty of opportunities, if you care passionately about a particular topic, to come down and testify, either in your personal capacity, or if the city council's taken a position on something, to do that on behalf of the city as well. So that, and then my contact information is readily available. If you need to get ahold of me, or if you want to submit testimony, a lot of what I do is help facilitate that as well for you. Make sure that you're aware of when the hearings are going to be on a particular topic. The hearings come out on, you know, Thursday afternoons, and then we know what the schedule's going to be for the following week. And I try to get a report off to the city then, as timely as I can after I get that, depending on, you know, everything else that's going on. But to get that hearing schedule out and keep that up to date. So if you want to know anything about something you hear at the legislature or on the way in, just give me a call.
And I guess a kind of a follow-up on that, I've been a lobbyist for multiple sessions, you know, and for that means for me, because I work at a nonprofit, we don't have any money. I paid $25 to be a legal lobbyist, and at the end of the year, I filled out a report saying I didn't give anybody any money, because, well, we don't have any. But that being said, where does that position come in play as us as a council, if we are testifying either on behalf of the council, or as an individual citizen who happens to be a member of a council? What are the legalities around that?
It's fairly simple to come down. If you're testifying on your own behalf, there's no filing requirement or anything like that. You don't have to register as a lobbyist.
Yep.
If you come down on behalf of the city itself, you can expect that I would step up to the podium and introduce you. But that's not necessary. In the case of a political subdivision official, you can step up to the podium and simply announce your presence. And under those circumstances, you wouldn't necessarily have to file as a lobbyist either. My title is actually Special Assistant City Attorney. I'm under contract as an attorney for the city, and I technically wouldn't have to file, but I believe the full disclosure of things that I go ahead and file anyway, so that people know that when they look up my name, they can see that I'm actually representing the city of Minnetonka. So that's the process. But you can come down anytime and step up to the podium. It's a very, I think most chairman are pretty welcoming about having citizens and even first-timers come down and testify, so.
Thank you. That's all.
I do want to give a thank you to Shane, stepping in as mayor a little over six months ago. To watch you work, Shane, is incredible. We wouldn't have got those audiences without the work, without the work and the work you put in behind the scenes, and as well networked as you are down in Bismarck. So I appreciate that. And also with Dan Jonison and Ryan Ackerman, when it pertains to flood control, we put our miles in. From Coffey and Washburn and Cooperstown to Bismarck, we put a lot of miles in. And I honestly believe we did our homework, along with former councilman Strilee, who, I mean, from the next day after he was sat back in July, he was working diligently for flood protection for the whole Service Valley. And I can't go without talking about Dave Ashley and the Service River Joint Board. Just the work, it was a lot of work, but it was fun to watch how we all worked together. We were all stepping on the same foot in the same direction, and we challenged our local legislators to do the same. We know they're pulled in a number of different directions when they get to the legislative session, but we challenged them to step on the same foot in the same direction, wave the flag for flood control. It's good, you know, the Suris River goes from, comes in from Canada and leaves in Canada. So from border to border, this isn't just a Minnetonka project. This is a north-central, this is a Suris River Basin project. And we still got some work to do, and I think we're dedicated, the team that we have put together, and we're- together, and we're dedicated to get it to the finish line. So I appreciate all your hard work on that, Shane. And one thing I do want to talk about as well, and I don't know if you want to speak to it, or if Breka wants to speak to it, about our, on the military side, the Sentinel project. I don't know, Shane, if you're, if you're, if you want to speak to it, or if we have Breka from the Chamber EDC come up and speak to it. But this is a project that is quickly approaching on the horizon, and for the Minot area, this is one of the largest projects, if not the largest, construction project in the history of the state of North Dakota. A $3.2 billion project for the Minot area. And that's coming, that's going to, that's going to sneak up on us. And I, we've got an ask, I believe, coming from the, going to the legislature to help us prepare for that. And I think it's something we need to, we need to start talking about now and preparing now.
Yeah. I'll say a few words, but then I do think you're right to call out Breka because she's very much, you know, steeped in the nuances of all of this, and has been engaged with a number of other communities on this topic. I'm certainly familiar with it and have gotten briefed up on what it means to Minot. When you think about the fact that this is, of the three states that are going to be impacted by this modernization effort, Wyoming and Montana, as well as North Dakota here in the Minot area, we're last, right? We're last. So there's a lot that can be learned from the other communities. But as far as the state's role, to prepare this community with the resources needed to be able to go visit those other communities, number one, and learn from them, as well as put this where it needs to be in terms of a priority, I would say is of the utmost importance. To secure, you know, the local support for a project like this is absolutely necessary. And then finally, when you look at the end game, if this is the last place, as far into the future as that might be, we've got workforce challenges today, I expect that we may have workforce challenges tomorrow. If this community is really prepared, well-prepared, there may be a message in there for some of those workers who say, I'm finally done with this project. I've been in Wyoming, been in Montana, North Dakota looks like a great place to settle down and use my skills. If we're ready for them, this is also a workforce opportunity. So I would just kind of touch on those highlights and say that I am fully briefed on it. But I think if you wanted Mr. Mayor to bring Breka up, she's, she's been very involved with the strategy on this, so.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gettle. Well, we know the Special Assistant City Attorney listens well. He took most of the talking points as far as for it. So as Mr. Gettle mentioned, we have been working very hard on the military side. As many of you know, we have a number of different layers that we're involved with with the military. Not only on a local level do we have Task Force 21, which the city does support our efforts in that space. We're not going to let our foot off the gas on that effort, but truly what we need to prepare for are all of the modernization projects. Not only do we have Sentinel, which is the missile wing side, we have the B-52, the modernization there, and we also have LRSO. So we have a major, major lift as far as to stay ahead of what's coming into our state. And we, I personally sit on Governor Burgum's Task Force for military issues in North Dakota. It's called TF-MIND. It's chaired by the Lieutenant Governor, and it also has department heads from Commerce, Health and Human Services, and other representation throughout the state. And so they have an executive committee. Pete Henkla, a local attorney here, and myself, both are members of the Task Force and Commission. We actually had a call this morning to talk with some of the state leadership regarding this. We have discovered, we know that military is important across the state, not only to Minot with our needs, but also to our partners in Grand Forks and Fargo. Grand Forks has an Air Force base. Fargo has the North Dakota National Guard. And so we have actually been in conversations with leadership from Fargo, Grand Forks, and Minot, talking about what each of our community needs are. And we will be working this upcoming legislative session to see if we can support and match some of the local dollars that we have been fortunate to not only raise privately through the Chamber EDC, the city's portion and help and support, but we know that there's a gap. The biggest part of this is that this next year, once the EIS is completed, then they will dig dirt and start in Effie Warren, which is in Cheyenne. Our goal is to really get boots on the ground to understand what the impact is, not only to our area, but to our state, and really prepare North Dakota for this project. If, as the Air Force said, this is the largest modernization project that has ever been undertaken in the Air Force, and actually all of Department of Defense, it's a huge project. When they call it a mega project, you know it's a big project. And so really, we haven't ever undertaken a project to this extent. And so we really, over the next couple of years, are going to be working hard to not only take our Task Force 21 efforts with Mr. Janser, who chairs that committee, but build out a team that can be in the places we need to be, understand what kind of workforce is coming with that. And as Mr. Gettle mentioned, we have talked strategy that, at the end of the day, the individuals that'll be following this project all the way through will have been away from wherever their home is for about a decade or so. And so if we can work to prepare our state to make sure that we're prepared for this project, I think there's a lot of great opportunities there. It's a long-term play, though. You're going to hear a little about it now, but it's a bigger ramp-up, and we need to be prepared as a state. So we do have efforts right now to coordinate with our other military communities and go into the session with an ask specific to support of the efforts that we're doing in this space. And it's going to be critical to really be in places like Effie Warren to understand what those impacts could be and will be when they come to North Dakota. And the dollar you threw out there, the $3.2 billion, that's in today's construction dollars, and that doesn't include the MilCon and the other construction that'll take place on base. So this is a big project that'll be coming our way. Hopefully that answers, gives an overview.
Steve?
Thank you. The other number I wanted you to get out in the public now and to us again, is how many more people are we expecting to settle in our community?
That's, that's a number that they're cautious about putting out there at this time because we are third. We're going to learn a lot from Effie Warren and from Malmstrom, Montana, Great Falls, Montana. So I mean, but we're talking thousands that'll be traveling with this project. And then there's also going to be a component of opportunities for businesses in this area as well. And so this isn't a small workforce that'll be following it, it's rather significant. The numbers, though, we are cautious to put those out there to ensure that we're level-setting expectations. We're not going to see dirt turning tomorrow. We're trying to prepare for when this project comes our way in the next decade.
Am I correct, though, that a rough guess at this point might be 3,000 to 5,000 new people coming to town?
There's, there's numbers in those ranges that have been discussed. Again, they're very cautious to put out the numbers, so until we understand how many will be traveling with the contractor that's been awarded this project, and how many will be really kind of needed throughout. We're going to learn more once we track what's happening with Effie, but those figures are not off.
But clearly, a lot of people, some of them will be here for many years.
Yep.
Thank you. Lot of opportunities.
Lot of opportunities. I can look to our chairman of the Task Force 21 if he has any additional comments, not to put you on the spot there, Mr. Janser, but I know that you're very engaged in this as well. One other thing I should mention is we have four individuals from Minot alone that sit on Air Force Global Strike Command Civic Leaders Group, Mark, myself, Randy Burkhard, and Bruce Christensen. So we really are tracking this at all levels.
Mark?
So I would just note that this, you know, as this project rolls out, it's really critical, as Breka said, that we understand what happens in Cheyenne, and we understand what happens in Great Falls. And as we're able to make those observations and learn, then we can be ready here for when things roll in. There are plans at this point that I have no doubt will evolve and change over the, over the course of the installation of Sentinel. Remember that what's happening here is, if things stay on track, once, once they start, they'll be, they'll be replacing a missile a week for nine years. That's the scope of this project. And that doesn't include all the infrastructure that will be necessary on the, on the bases and throughout the missile field. So it's, it's an immense undertaking. The other thing I would like to mention, or footstomp, is that with, with the arrival of the workforce, you know, you have all the secondary and tertiary effects of, you know, school district, health services, you know, all of those things can, can, are affected whether, you know, you're prepared or not. We want to be prepared so that we're able to get through this with, without overwhelming some of those agencies that, you know, are impacted when a bunch more people show up all of a sudden or in a fairly short amount of time.
Thank you for that.
And one final thing, to go, to go back to the discussion about daycare, which is tied into workforce, which is tied into economic development, the, the military folks in our community are in exactly the same boat. The, the childcare center on the base is looking desperately, you know, constantly looking for, for staff. They could use probably another 30 people in order to be at full capacity. And for the 1,200 or so airmen's families that are living in town, who could, could use daycare in Minot, it's the same problem. There's, there's not enough capacity. And like, somebody mentioned, shift workers, you know, some, some of these are folks who deploy to the missile field for a week at a time. So one of the, one of the parents is gone for that length of time, and there has to be daycare as well as with, care with the other parent. So there are a lot of aspects, and hopefully we can all work together to find some solutions as we go forward.
And just maybe to add to that, that really is a testament to why the Task Force's effort is so important. Not only are we tracking those efforts, but just, most of you probably know this, but if you talk about the numbers that Mark had mentioned, we're talking one missile every eight days for replacement. There's 150 in Cheyenne, 150 at Malmstrom, and 150 here. So you can do some quick farmer math on that. This is a long-term play for us, and we want to be ready for it. So we'll be involved all the way throughout. Task Force will stay very engaged, but if anytime you have questions regarding this project, please feel free to reach out. It's certainly something that's a priority of ours.
Thank you, Breka.
Any else?
Any other comments or questions for Breka and/or Shane? Steve?
Just one thing I forgot to mention. In terms of processing evidence for law enforcement, my number-one priority, having worked with victims for 40-plus years, is sexual assault evidence kits. There's been a backlog, and I think the Attorney General, the new one, recognizes that, but it's absolutely critical that be dealt with. You can't have something like that hanging over your head as a victim, or as a perpetrator, or an accused perpetrator. All kinds of evidence processing is critical, but sexual abuse assault kits are a very high priority for me and I think a lot of other individuals.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Good luck at the session.
Yep. Again, if anybody has any questions anytime, just email me or, or call me, and I'll try to be as helpful as I can.
Thank you. Anything else, Steph?
No. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Let's move on to item number six, Consider the Report of the Planning Commission. Moving on to 6.1, is a public hearing on the preliminary plat of the Keebler Deifel Draveki Schmidt subdivision. Now is the time for anybody who wishes to speak for or against this project. Second call for anybody who wishes to speak for or against item number 6.1. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Steve moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, call the rule.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.2, Public Hearing on the Kramer Addition Campground. Now is the time, it's a public hearing, for anybody who wishes to speak for or against item 6.2. Please approach the podium.
Thank you, sir. I'm one of the neighbors out there of this Kramer project. On the map that we have of the thing there, I'm just across the railroad track from the proposed campground that's going in there. And I have several concerns out there. This campground is for kids camping in the summer, and it's right next to the railroad track, not much less than just walking down the street a little ways. And I'm concerned about the safety of the children and stuff, having them out there next to the Sulein Railroad that goes through there at 60 miles an hour. And are they going to put up fences, or what are they going to do to keep the kids from wandering onto the tracks? That's one of my first concerns. And then there's also the river channel that goes through there. And I think that could be a concern, too, for the, having a campground out there right next to it like that, especially with flooding and stuff there, and the kids getting into that, it's got a slimy edge on it, doesn't know well groomed channel or anything, so it would be a safety issue for the children at that time. Another concern is that's a wooded area out there around my house and stuff, and I've had several fires around my house out there during the summers when it's dry. And if they're going to be shooting fireworks and stuff into that campground or toward my house, I really don't want to have, on a personal issue, my house burning down because there's people out there doing stuff. And I'm wondering about policing, and who's going to be keeping track of that? Is the city going to be policing that area if that becomes a campground? And make sure that things are safe out there? And if we have a complaint or unruly neighbors that are camping there and making a lot of noise, who's going to take care of that? So those are just some of my concerns. I'm against this project going in where it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, what are the wishes of council?
Could we have somebody from planning address those concerns?
John's coming up. Thanks, Mayor Ross, members of the council.
Is your mic on?
It is, but I can speak up louder. With regard to the crossing, the railroad crossing, as far as fencing, I know that Mr. Kramer is intending to put a perimeter fence around the proposed campground. As far as crossing on the railroad tracks specifically through the right-of-way, you know, there is existing Bison Trail Plant Park out there already with, with activity, I think it's park-related activity. I haven't heard any other concerns regarding neighboring property owners. Obviously, anytime you're crossing a railroad track, you're going to have to pay attention. So I guess I would leave that to the tenants to address any crossing issues, whether they're going to be with those kids that are crossing into the park itself. As far as being wooded, I think that is precisely why it's being proposed to be used as a campground, because it's naturally an amenity and serves to add to the desirability of camping in that particular area. Same thing, why it's close, you know, it's close to the water as well. So that's, I think it's intentional that, that Mr. Kramer is looking at this specific site to be used as a campground because of those amenities. I can provide some of the conditions, I think that might help. Let me just go over some of the conditions. And we did add plenty of conditions. And so we genuinely looked at this and evaluated its impact to a rural residential area, because that's precisely what it is. It would be a change of pace, but its direct connectivity to the Bison Trail Plant does make it an asset. They kind of play off of each other. There are parking issues at Bison Trail Plant. Mr. Kramer is working with parks to kind of make this a cohesive co-development. So I do think the two play off of each other well, but I understand the concerns of neighboring property owners. So I'm going to go over a few of these. So one of the requests was a variance to paving. Ultimately, Planning Commission saw that as a no-brainer. It is rural out there, it's a rural area, there's no paved driveways, so paving the parking lot when you're coming off of a dirt road, that makes sense. The only thing that's going to be paved on this particular site will be an ADA parking stall that'll lead up to the shared bathroom facilities that are on-site, and that's federal requirement. So besides that, it was approved. I'll go over- I'll go over. So, the conditional use permit really went over most of these things that were going to mitigate these negative externalities. So, for one, the conditional use permit's completely contingent on how this rezone plays out, obviously. So, they're not going to be able to move forward without the proper zoning. They're going to be required to provide a finalized site plan to a city's engineering department, and then a planning division for review and approval. Kind of got to catch all for all necessary local, state, and federal plans and permits necessary. It is within the floodplain, so we're going to have to make sure that development within this particular area adheres to all of the various different requirements that are at play here. Fire danger signage, so it's required to be posted at the entrance to the camping area to inform patrons of potential fire hazards and restrictions in place. An earthen berm or side obscuring fence shall be constructed or erected wherever parking stalls are oriented. This is the camping spots. We want to make sure that cars, as they're running, are not shining lights on adjoining residential property owners. So, these, as he's, as Mr. Kramer intends to do some modifications to the site, then he'll just naturally include these improvements into it. So, sound or noise projecting from the subject property shall not exceed fifty-five decibels during the hours of seven AM and eleven PM, and fifty decibels during the hours of eleven PM and seven AM the following day. These are our noise standards that we apply within the city. Typically, we don't have, as you probably were, our noise ordinance is, is within our municipal code, so it doesn't apply within the extraterritorial area. And so, by including it as a condition in the conditional use permit, then it is enforceable. So, we can revoke that conditional use permit and shut down the activity if it's not properly managed. And with that, the, there will be an onsite, wouldn't say a residence, but onsite manager who will be policing. So, that was critical to the success of this, because we simply don't want to have somebody that's not around. If there's somebody around, then that's probably the best way to police various activities onsite. I highly doubt Mr. Kramer is going to permit fireworks, or at least typically that is not permitted. Certainly, yeah, we don't go into that level of detail, specific activities on particular sites. So, that wasn't a thing that we've even considered. However, they need to work with, for his insurance purposes for fires, I think he has concerns specifically with regard to fire pits alone on that particular site. And again, if he were here, I'd defer that particular question to him as far as how he intends to operate at that specific level. But I do think staff, in a final catch-all, it'd be to defer to the Sundry Township with regard to any improvements that may be required for Fifty-Fourth Avenue Southeast, and then the specific site. The approach for, off of Fifty-Fourth Avenue into the property, that's the driveway. So, those are the conditions that were included in the conditional use permit, has been approved. Can certainly add conditions if there's specific concerns. I, as staff, and several other staff members, engineering, the numerous conversations that we had with Mr. Kramer, I certainly have a high degree of confidence that he's going to make this a properly functioning and harmonious campground, but if there are particular conditions that we can include in this to allow it to move forward, then certainly I'll, you know, open ears for, for any of that. But we evaluated it diligently, and this is what we came up with. It's amenable to the applicant, and up until tonight, I did not hear any opposition specifically on the record anyway. I did get a phone call, which is why I included that broad referral to Sundry Township. So, stand for any questions.
Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of questions. First, were the neighbors notified prior to this being on the, the Planning Commission agenda?
Mayor Ross, Alderwoman Olson, yes. So, within six hundred feet, property owners were notified.
And so, with approval or disapproval of this agenda item tonight, where are we at in the process? If the neighbors continue to have some concerns, you know, how many more times will this be on an agenda before, you know, there's actually a campground in place? So, can you kind of go over that?
Certainly. So, Mr. Kramer hasn't, so go through a second reading would be the primary, then there'll be a final plat that'll have to come forward, which also need to be approved. Ultimately, this is probably the make or break. I mean, if you're going to approve the first reading, unless something comes out of the woodwork between the first and the second, there's typically no reason to deny the second. And the final plat is largely making sure that eyes are dotted, t's are crossed with regard to the final plat documents. So, if you've already evaluated the preliminary plan or the plat, there's really, as long as the final plat doesn't look drastically different from the preliminary, there's no reason to deny. I would say that January third, five-thirty PM, will be the second reading, presuming it gets approved tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else? Carrie?
And Chief Click, this would be Ward County jurisdiction, right? Because it's an ET, so that would, the Ward County sheriffs would be the entity if somebody was to call nine-one-one or, or dispatch. It would be Ward County sheriffs who would be dispatched for that area.
Any other questions for Mr. Van Dyke? Thank you, John. Any other comments on either for or against? If not, what are the wishes of the council? Paul?
I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Steve? Motion, any discussion? If not, please call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Motion passes. Moving on to item six point three, Public Hearing, Zoning Text Amendment. Fall, it's our fall cleanup of zoning text amendments. This is a time for the public to weigh in either for or against any of these items on the report to the Planning Commission. Second call for public input on item six point three. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and approve the recommendations as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Paul. Any discussion?
I would just like to comment. I know, you know, people often, you know, think, oh, my God, this is going to, this was a huge overhaul, and you all committed, Mr. Billingsley, to, you know, continue to be flexible and, and pivot when changes became apparent in this huge overhaul. And so, I'm happy to see that you are following through and coming to us with cleanups as they become noticed by you all, or the residents, or businesses that are using our new land use agreement. So, thank you for bringing it back to us for some tweaking.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other discussion? If not, please call the rule.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item seven, Consent Items. We have twenty items on the consent agenda. Is there any that need to be pulled? Any items from the public that need to be pulled? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on the remaining items.
Motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? If not, please call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to action items. Eight point one, Proposal for the Disposition of Home Sweet Home from Jacob and Amy Jenkins. What are the wishes of the council?
I will move to approve the proposal from the Jenkins, and authorize staff to drop the paperwork for the transfer of the property, and authorize the mayor to sign all of the relevant paperwork.
Second.
And by Carrie, second by Paul. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I just want to, this has been, you know, important property, I think, for our community, and I am so pleased that Jacob and Amy Jenkins have come forward to really take on a Herculean task of getting this beautiful home renovated and back to the, the beauty that it once was. And I'm just, I'm excited to see this moving forward in, in the hands of some really passionate and committed individuals. So, thank you, Amy and Jacob.
Steve?
I want to echo what Carrie said. It'll be nice to get this property back in a fully functional state. I think it's a great location, it's a great idea, and should encourage people to visit Minot and stay here at least for the short term, and hopefully, they'll see what they'll like, and then, like what they see, and they'll stay here for a longer term. Great idea. Thank you for your courage in developing this.
Scott? Yeah, I want to just reiterate, too. I had the opportunity to sit in and learn a little bit about this, this opportunity, and, and, you know, the, the house has been a sunk cost in many ways for the city for a long time. It's just sitting there, it's not helping anybody, and it's costing the taxpayers some money. I think it's a good opportunity to get it back on the tax rolls. I love, I mean, it's going to be a passion project for the people doing it, and I congratulate you, and, and thank you for stepping forward and doing that, and I, I can't wait to, you know, a tour of it, once it's done, would be greatly appreciated, so.
Any other comments? If not, please call the rule.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to eight point two, Selection of EAPC Architects for Police Department and Municipal Courts-Based Study. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Move by Lisa, second by Mark. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to eight point three, Approval of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Services Agreement with MACEDC. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Carrie?
I would like to make it an amended motion. I've talked to Ms. Kramer about it. Last year, I know Alderman, Pittner, and I were concerned that we were only getting the reports in January, but we are allotting the money in December. So, I would like to amend number, I guess that is number three, in the services agreement for the reports to be in July twenty-twenty-three and December twenty-twenty-three, so that we can actually see the, the goals of MACEDC and what they've done in twenty-twenty-three before we allot the twenty-twenty-four money.
So, we have an amend, an amendment to the motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the amended portion of the, of the motion? If not, please call the rule.
So, just to clarify, the motion to amend is to amend the paragraph to include a report in July of twenty-twenty-three and December of twenty-twenty-three before allocating next year's budget to...
Well, I mean, we can be very specific and say the first meeting of December of twenty-twenty-three, because it's usually the second meeting of December we do the allocation. So, I don't, you know, I mean, the city manager can just hold it to and put it on the, the second meeting's agenda. I don't know. Do we want to add specific language?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, not to complicate things further, but typically, once council has adopted the, the next fiscal year's budget, we try to bring back all these funding agreements fairly quickly. The only reason why this one is in, in December, right now being approved tonight, instead of the other ones like, trying to think of the senior housing project, or senior housing funding, and some of those, is because we had some additional negotiations to do with regards to this, clean up some language, there's some temporary language in there that we're fixing. Council allocated another hundred thousand dollars towards workforce development in the last budget, so it took a little bit more, this, this contract had more work to do with it than the other ones did. So, typically, this contract wouldn't come for approval before the council in December. It would probably come forward more like in October or November with the other agreements shortly following the budget process of the council. So, even, even amending this to December, you're still likely going to approve the contract for twenty-twenty-four prior to receiving the report, unless you receive the information you're looking for in June as opposed to the end of the year.
Breka, come tell us what your thoughts are. I mean, I'm not trying to make this more difficult, but like, you know, this is a huge, you know, it's six hundred thousand dollars, and, I mean, I have full confidence that, I mean, you guys are going to meet the objectives you lay forth in, you know, the schedule, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, Alderwoman Evans, I think that when you have mentioned the, the changes on the timelines, we're more than happy to report back at any given time. I think our goal is to, twice a year, provide a mid-year report, just to show where we are tracking with the measurements in our contract, and then at the end of the year, provide another report, just recapping the year, so you kind of know what are our goals going into the following, upcoming year? What are we going to be doing? You know, we're more than happy to adjust that. I think the timelines you have proposed, which I've, we can certainly hit, would be doing it at the June and December of that same year. And then, really, as far as the contract approval process, I don't know that I turn to the city as far as in, when you would typically turn those contracts around. Now, given, if at the end of the year, when we provide our year-end recap, if there's anything that was unsatisfactory, or any questions, or anything else, that still gives us time to shift our strategy and align with, you know, what the city's intent is for those funds. You technically approved the, the budget, though, earlier, and then we just do the agreement. This year was unique, as the city manager indicated, there, we had the additional dollars going towards workforce, which is a new initiative, an effort, and then we, there was a combination of the military side into one contract, which was something the city attorney worked on. So, it was unique in the sense that it got pushed, but I would certainly support if you want to have a reporting period in June and December versus July and January. We're, we're good with however you'd like us to report back.
And is there any, I mean, since it is approved in the budget, and this is just the, the services agreement, is there any downside if it, if this wasn't done until, like, the second meeting of December?
Well, the only part would be is that, you know, we're setting our goals much earlier. We're presenting our final budget to the board of directors at our December meeting, hopefully sometime sooner. And so, if there was a major shift as far as in it, and the agreement wasn't approved or something changed, that would be the only thing. But again, we'll work with whatever timelines that you have. I believe most of the agreements, as the city manager mentioned, are done earlier so that we know that, what the expectations are, so then we, in our planning process, can plan for those and make sure that in the upcoming year, we hit those objectives and measurements that are part of our contract. We have some very specific deliverables that are part of that, so we take that into account with our planning and our budgeting cycle to make sure that we hit those deliverables.
I have a question for the city attorney, Stephanie. So, not just them, but any of the ones we do contract service agreements with? So, assuming we kept things status quo, right, and money is allotted before the final report, and the contract wasn't fulfilled, we would have the right for, would we have the right to pursue a breach of contract? Like, what protections does, do we have when we enter into these service agreements with the entities we do?
So, so I've reviewed the MACEDC contract prior to this meeting, so that's fresh in my mind. The other contracts are not fresh in my mind, but under this particular contract, the compensation paragraph states that in the event that this agreement is terminated, the city's obligation to make payment to the provider is set forth herein, which is by invoice. We would provide an invoice, they would provide an invoice for services, and then we would check it, and we would remit monthly, on a monthly basis, each month from the provider. So, in the event of termination, the city's obligation to make payment to the provider is set forth herein, shall immediately cease with payment for the most recent month's services prorated to the date of termination. All of these contracts are loosely based off of each other, so I suspect that same language is in the other, I believe, four services agreements that we have, but I would just have to pull those up and check those to confirm.
And there's a clause in there of thirty days notification from the city. So, let's say you get halfway through the year, and you're not happy, you provide thirty days notification, those monthly payments terminate, as the city attorney just outlined. So, the council has the ability to exit out of the contract if you don't feel the services are being provided as contracted for.
It's 30 days without cause, but like, so we can terminate it, right, as soon as we're in notice is given?
Yes, so cause is, if the fail, if the provider fails to provide services as required by this agreement within the time specified or any extension agreed to by the city, or fails to perform the work as to endanger the performance of this agreement. And termination for cause is effective upon delivery of the notice to the provider.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I don't think we need to go down the rabbit hole of terminating the agreements or anything like that. I think where, where, I think, where Carrie was coming from with the motion and, and my thoughts with it as well, are that when we have a report at the end of the, we approve the, the contract through the agreement in December and then we have the report in, in January, it's just the public perception that we're, we're concerned with. When, so maybe, Brecka, if you would, would it be amenable to not only your organization, but I would say from the city's side, any other organizations, maybe in October when we do approve the agreement? Would you be willing to come before the council and give a, a small update?
We can certainly provide an update at any given time. I mean, we absolutely would be able to. The only concern I would have with that part would be that there are truly a lot of activities that take us right up until the end of the year. Our BRNE program, our business retention and expansion program, we have a target of five businesses per month. And so, those type of programs, we wouldn't be able to fully report on. And even too, with some of the other pieces, workforce, for example, you know, is a new one with some measurables. We have timelines, for example, in this year's contract to stand up a workforce task force. If we are benchmarking this year's by December 31st of 2023. If we were providing a report in October, we may or may not hit that measurement. So, I, I guess I would recommend staying towards a mid-year, which is what we do, whether it's June or July. And then end of the year, which is either December or January, whichever way you'd want to go. Now, again, we will report back at any given time, what you want to do. But there will be some deliverables that we won't have a full reporting of, just given that we have some monthly kind of targets and different pieces. And it really wouldn't give you a full snapshot of where we are mid-year and where we are at year-end.
Scott?
Brecka, while you're there, so Ms. Grant, obviously, or this agreement goes from January 1st through December 31st. So, I want to kind of hit on something you kind of said a little bit there, which is, obviously, your reporting of data is going to continue till December 31st. I'm assuming you don't shut down on December 5th for the year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good, good. So, with that, I mean, if we're going to have a full report on what you've done in that year, wouldn't it make the most logical sense to wait until the end of the year and, and give you a time to collect data, put stories together and give us that correct information?
That would, that would benchmark us for things. I'll go back to BRNE, the business retention and expansion, for example. We actually take the data that we get, we pull it in and then quarterly are providing a benchmark report. So, it's, it's the same capture of time. So, you are correct. That's why the agreement currently states July and January. Again, we will work with you however is best suited. But correct, the deliverables within our contract are in place through December 31st, 2023. Or, you know, this contract, for example, but if they do go through the end of the year. So, even the reporting on BRNE, we'd have to probably provide that where we are to date and then provide an amendment to January of what the full final report is, because we don't actually generate that report until January.
Sure, and, and you did mention that there is quarterly data out on, on at least that BRNE. Is there other, I mean, it would quarterly updates to us, even perhaps in writing, be a possibility? Or what do you, my question is, what are you already have in existence that you could provide to us throughout the year for updates beyond just the two in-person presentations?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, as you guys know, we are more than willing to work with you any given time. Our, our board agendas and meeting information is sent to the city every month. I know that the city manager includes that information and shares that. We have a number of different reporting back type measurables. So, really, wherever you guys are looking at, we can provide. You know, really, for the most part, this, we're contracted to those components, but there's a lot of other activity that we have. We just need to know what the expectations are and then we can certainly hit those. But again, I would recommend two times a year because it really gives us a chance to do a deeper dive. And if you guys recall, with especially the addition of workforce, there's going to be a lot of pieces. Quarterly, for example, I probably won't know where we are with workforce this first quarter because there's going to, a lot of it will be tied to this upcoming legislative session. But again, that July timeline, we'll have a better idea of, hey, what came out of the session? Where are there opportunities for the Minot area? And then could give a better snapshot of some of those type of pieces. Our recommendation is the two times.
Carrie?
Scott, then?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so this discussion was good because it's, I've talked myself out of it. I'm going to withdraw the motion and I just, you know, I think, hopefully, we can, not just with you, but with all of our services agreement, really as a council, be looking at the deliverables and, you know, using the, you know, termination clause if we need to, right? If we are, you know, expending taxpayer money to organizations who are, you know, selling us a, a bill of goods and not delivering those, you know, I would, you know, so I am just going to be more diligent and vigilant with making sure, you know, whatever comes at the end of the year. And I'm going to, so I'm withdrawing it all with July and January. Let's do it.
Mayor Alderman Evans, my recommendation would be to take a vote on the amendment since it was seconded.
Okay.
And then proceed to the main motion if that's what, what you wish to do. And then I was just going to state that the, the terms in this agreement, there are just, it's a minimum that you have to meet. So, if you want, if MACEDC has something significant that occurs, there's nothing from preventing them to supplement, provide additional reporting if they think that it's...
Or if we want an update, like on workforce, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Randomly in April.
Absolutely, and we provide a lot of different updates, as you guys have seen throughout the year. Even to, for example, our strategic plan, we're going to be very transparent and very open as far as the main pillars that our organization is tasked with in the upcoming year. We've developed a five-year plan and those pillars, those five pillars will really be a part of our ongoing conversation. The more we can share our story of not only what we're working on for the area, but for really kind of bettering the specific tasks that we have here, we're more than willing to share those items.
Thank you, Brecka.
Yep.
If there's nothing further, let's, we have an amended motion, a second and an amendment in a second. Let's call the rule.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig Gula?
No.
Ross?
No.
Burlingame?
No.
Amendment fails. Moving on to the original motion. Is there anything further? If not, please call the rule.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to eight point four, funding request for the CTE remodel. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I have a motion and then follow in a second. I do have some comments to make. But my move that we allocate 1,842,093 dollars from Hub City funding to complete the internal remodel of the first and second floor of the CTE building located at 120 Burdick Expressway East.
Second.
There's a motion by Lisa, second by Steve. Lisa?
Sure, so I, I have just a few reasons. You know that this is kind of been my passion project. And so, I just want to cover a, a few items that I think are important for us to consider. The first one is that the concept of the CTE program in downtown Minot was actually developed by the city of Minot when we applied for the NDR grant. We sought out community partners and thankfully, Minot State University and Dakota College at Botno stepped up and worked with us to develop a plan and curriculum that is ready to go. It's ready to go in August of 2023, actually. Though this process has been long, there has always been support for it. However, because the process has been lengthy, the costs have increased, just as all projects that we see come before us. And the second idea is that workforce development will be a major focus in the 2023 legislative session. We've talked about that quite a bit this evening already. From the governor on down, North Dakotas, we all know that there is a shortage of workers in all areas. Dental assistants and dental hygienists are in particular short supply. Most of the graduates from the program at NDCSE choose to locate in the eastern part of the state. With the proposed CTE in Minot, we can train and employ them in central and western North Dakota. My third thought is that completing the second floor of the building creates the space to offer more programs more quickly. Part of the Magic Fund Building Purchase Agreement states that three programs will be running in 2023. Though we may have to extend that deadline, our goal should be to have as many programs in place as quickly and efficiently as possible. The funding approval tonight would delay everything by a year or more. The momentum is in place and we want to make this needed center of excellence an option for students in, in 2023 in August. And lastly, by using Hub City funding, we are allocating state funds to complete the project. The overage is not falling on the backs of our local taxpayers. Rather, it is using monies earned through energy sector businesses to address the need that we see in northwest North Dakota.
Any other comments? Carrie?
Mr. Lakefield, how much do we currently have in the Hub City funding pot? Thereabouts. I don't need a, but you always know the exact.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to give the real easy answer, but I'm going to qualify this a little bit. We collect this money and allocate it into budget based on an estimate of what we think we are going to collect. And as you all know, those are highly variable revenues that come into play. We also sometimes end up with some of these projects that we don't expend full amounts. Then we turn around and roll that out. So, currently, we have about 7.4 million dollars in Hub City funding that is in, sitting in the capital projects funds. However, some of that is allocated to projects that just haven't been completed or are in process. So, right now, we have, it looks like a little bit over 2 million dollars that is unallocated for the current budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Current as in 2022?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
And then, I know this, but I just want it to go on record that, I don't know, Harold, maybe you can answer it, or, or Stephanie. But the, the points you made about the, the response from the legislature and stuff, it's my understanding Senator Burkhardt has placated some of those. Can you expand on that, Harold?
Yeah, in a memo, I outlined the pros and cons of different things. Legally, by state law, the council can direct how and what they want Hub City funding to go towards. So, there's no legal question that you can use Hub City funding for this action tonight. My, my, my concern was just more of what the political perception would be of the use of this funds. And we did address that in a meeting last week with some of our local representatives, including Representative, or I'm sorry, Senator Burkhardt, who, those that were in attendance at that meeting and thought that this was an appropriate use of funds. I just don't want to put the city of Minot in a position that the state legislature thinks that we're using monies they've allocated to us for purposes that wasn't intended. But I don't think that's an issue after our conversation last week.
Great, thank you for that clarification. And thanks, Dave, for...
Come on, Dave, don't go. Dave, before you go, I don't want you to get all the way back. I only do that to Lance. So, so historically, what have been the uses of Hub City funding?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Burlingame, it's been a variety of, of different uses. Now, typically, when the Hub City funding came into play, it was designed to allow the cities in western North Dakota that were the hubs for the oil field activity to deal with the rapidly expanding infrastructure required as a result of the oil boom. So, although it wasn't specifically outlined in the legislation exactly what you had to use it for, every year, we had to report back to the state legislature what we had expended those funds on. So, it was a conscious effort on the part of the city leaders, excuse me, at that time, that they wanted to use those funds to things that were directly related to the growth of the city and the impact from the oil industry. So, we saw most of those projects were street infrastructure, street repair, water main projects. We've purchased some police cars, fire equipment. Some of the funding went for the new fire station number five. So, a number of those things, but we typically use these all in capital accounts or the vast majority of it was used for capital purchases.
Okay, and again, this is a newbie question. So, if we approve that tonight, it comes out of this year's allocation of Hub City funding then? So, it'd come out of that $2 and it would not affect anything that we had planned for in next year's budget?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Burlingame, that is correct. All of the projects that we had allocated in the 2022 budget are fully funded with what we have collected. And so, we would have enough money in reserves either through other projects that didn't fully expend their allocation or from funds that we collected over and above what we had anticipated in the 2022 budget. We would have enough funding there to, to carry out this project. When I gave the estimate on how much we had left over, I just want to caveat that with we still have two months for the collections to get through the rest of the 2022 calendar year. So, we would anticipate additional collections before the end of the year as well.
Thank you. That's all I have for you. I have a comment afterwards, but... I, I just want to say I'm totally supportive of this. I think that getting the CT up and, up and running is helping workforce issues. I think that, you know, if, if our, our folks in the oil and gas industry want to bring employees into the community, they need dentists. And they're going to, you know, they're going to need dental assistance. And I think back to a dentist I recently spoke to who was talking about retiring early because he couldn't hire dental assistants and dental hygienists. So, this is, is exactly what, you know, what Minot needs and I can't wait to, again, there's a lot of things I can't wait to see happen tonight. So, exciting stuff.
We do have in the audience Dr. Carmen Simone, dean at Dakota College in Botno. You don't travel this far just to sit in the audience. So, if you would like to, I, I do have a question, though. When you, you know, utopia, the ultimate, I'll, I'll let you get up here. The ultimate, when this is up and running, fully funded, up and running, how many students do you foresee or project? With all the programs going, how many students do you see this center moving into the workforce?
Well, we've talked about 150 students as we were contemplating over the last many years about this project. Specifically for dental assisting, we're going to have 12 students a year and we'll have the facilities to support that. For dental hygiene, we'll be able to support 10 students a year in a two-year program. So, 20 students at a time as they work their way through that curriculum. So, 32 students every year will be impacted by this dental programs in particular. Now, in addition to dental, as we're talking about funding for the second floor in this project, we're anticipating many more programs to come into that center. And not only just in the center, but also throughout the community of Minot, supporting workforce training and career and technical education programming. This dental foray is really a heavy lift for us. And two programs that are very much needed in western North Dakota. We're excited to be able to bring them with your partnership to the city of Minot. If that answers your question, sir.
Any questions for, since we have our, thank you so much and thank you for coming all the way from Botno.
Thank, thank you so much.
You know, this was also one of those things that Senator Hoag talked about, you know, the CTE programs and, and how the CTE and workforce development, how it all has got to work together to get the people to come to North Dakota to take part in these programs, to get them back out into the work, into the workforce. So, it's going to take, it's going to take an effort by every, every step along the way. It's going to take a fierce effort to get these centers up and rolling, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one tidbit of information that Dr. Simone didn't mention. All along, we've been planning that the doors would open in August of 2023. And there are already a number of students who are taking the prerequisites to be in the dental, dental assisting program in August. So, we know that the word is out there and that the momentum is moving forward. So, we firmly believe that as long as we can get the construction taken care of, we'll be able to have students there.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, please call the rule.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item nine on the agenda, personal appearances. This is a time for anybody who would like to come up and address the council?
Evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, I'm Kenton Cozen, the president of the Fraternal Order of Police here in town, Lodge Seven. I just wanted to provide you guys with a bit of a disposition regarding our Christmas programs that we run every year. We started with Stuff a Squad. That was three weeks ago. We used, we filled about six police cars with presents for Minot community action in the Salvation Army. We divided them up in half and took half the presents to one and half to the other. And we collected about $2,600, which we also split right in half. Half that went to the Salvation Army and to community action. Then, not last weekend, this last weekend, but the one prior, we held our Cops and Kids program where we had a record-setting 128 kids that we provided money... Program where we had a record-setting 128 kids that we provided money to go and shop for themselves to provide them with a Merry Christmas. We had... We broke our previous record last year by 18 kids, and we had 17 different law enforcement agencies do the shopping with the kids, whether it be from Newtown to their tribal drug enforcement to Minot Police Officers, Ward County Sheriff's Office, other federal agencies in town. So just wanted to provide you guys with that information.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? If not, we can move on to item number 10 on the agenda, and that's miscellaneous and discussion items. Item 10.1 is the Visit Minot Report, and I see Steph is here.
Oops. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Ross and all the city council men and women. I'm Stephanie Shane Rock with Visit Minot. So a couple of things that I'm talking about tonight. This is our, I guess, annual report that we have for you based from our contract from two years ago. This is not a complete overview of what Visit Minot does. That, you know, when you were talking about the agreements that you have with the organizations, from what I know, Visit Minot's never come and done that on an annual basis. I think it's because the funding... There hasn't been funding per se from the city because it comes from the people who come in, and that's through the state essentially, or that's managed through the state, I should say, controlled through the state. So maybe that's why, Alderwoman Evans, when you were asking earlier, I'm like, you know what, that's a really good point, because the only thing that I've been reporting on tonight is specifically the Tourism Recovery and Resilience Project that we started two years ago. So with that said, I'm going to jump right in. What you see on the screen is from 2022. What I'm going to do tonight, I'm going to talk about 2022, give kind of an overview of what worked, a couple of things that didn't. And then we've got a few groups here that are going to give a really brief explanation of how they... How their program has benefited from through this Tourism Recovery and Resiliency Project. And then I'm going to come back and give a brief overview of the entire program and a preview of 2023. So again, what you see in front of you is 2022. These are all the events that were funded specifically by this project. What's interesting is that a year ago, there are three on here that we thought were going to qualify that didn't end up qualifying, and there's two on here that we wouldn't have known a year ago that were going to be on here. So there is a little bit more fluidity to this than I probably would expect a year in advance, but that seems to be the way it is with COVID and last minute... Last month type of planning. So backing it up to two years ago, this was a three... This is a three-year contract, and there was really two purposes. And I'll explain why I'm breaking it up into two. The first purpose was to build the capacity at Visit Minot so that we could support some of these other events and bringing, basically strengthening kind of the entire industry. And then the second point was to actually fund events. And when we were funding events, there was a couple really... There's a couple... There's two metrics that have been... That are required. They either need to be a new or a 30% growth in the past three years in order to get... So new in the past three years or 30% growth from the last time they had happened. We've learned that those are some hefty metrics. You also see on the right-hand side where you see Tier Two events. Every event that qualified this year was a Tier Two event, and you can see the parameters required in order to qualify for that. So in 2022, like we said, there we have a $6 million economic impact. And just as a reminder, we subscribe to... It's called Destinations International. They have an economic impact calculator. So we just plug in the parameters, and out comes this number. It is a conservative number because we... When we plug our numbers in, we are able to control that, and we like to approach this as conservatively as possible. So this is the rundown of 2022 events. As I mentioned, you know what? There were three events that did not meet these requirements, specifically that we thought we were going to be able to fund. And if you can go to the next slide, Derek, thanks. So this, what you see here, these are events that did not... We call it non-TRF qualified. And the thing I really want to point out here is, you know, these are events that Visit Minot had a different roles with on each one of them. This is not a complete list of all the events we work with, not even close. It's... Yeah, it's not even 15% of the total number of events. These are the ones that are a little bit bigger, or in the case of, you see a couple of numbers on here that are... They don't have a large impact yet, but we wanted to include them because they're groups that we're building relationships with. And that was the whole point of this program in the first place, was building relationships, figuring out what groups we can work with to figure out where we can move the needle. And so, you know, on some of these events, the impact has been low, but that was the point at that point, and that, like for instance, in the case of archery, we have an event in 2023. And so that was... That's the model of exactly what this program was meant to do. So you can see the impact of roughly $3.5 million to the community from these specific events that didn't qualify for TRF. Now, the reason I bring that up is because a few years ago, when we committed to this project, we committed to a $10 million economic impact from Tier One or Two events. And after the few people that chat, I'll come up and I'll kind of give you an overview on that. There's no doubt that it's going to be close, but we're hopeful. And I'll, like I said, I'll jump into that in a few minutes. So what I'll do right now is I'd like, we've got just four different groups, to come up and speak just for a minute or two. And the reason that these four groups were talking or are coming up is they either asked originally to come up and be able to... Or be... If they would be able to come in and address the council when we did this, or they really do represent... Our role with each of these is very different. And so I just kind of wanted to show the spectrum of the different kind of works we do. So first is going to be Steve from PBR, and then we've got gymnastics, Badland Circuit Finals, and then I think Jeremy from Minot State is here. He was on his way, so...
Steve, are you here?
Hi, I'm Steve Bogdan with the Minot Wisemen's PBR, and we were a recipient of funding in 2021. And the benefits that we saw and the value in this program in working with Steph is that we were able to work with her to do giveaways, which included tickets and hotel stays for areas 50 miles outside of Minot. Then we also worked with her to do packages for areas within Minot as well. There was advertising programs that reached all the way into Canada for us. And then there were also strategic planning and calibrations to determine geofencing so that we could specifically design some of our advertising dollars to whether we went after a Williston Market or a Mandan Market or different things like that. So working with her to do that type of thing, we're also able to make timely decisions as far as social media launches and use Steph and them as a resource to make sure that we were doing it in a timely manner, not releasing something too early or coming out too late, but making sure that everything was on a cohesive level with everything. So we saw extreme value in the program, and we're glad that we were able to take part in it.
Mayor, council members, my name is Melissa Bellnup, and I am the owner of Rebel Athletics here in Minot. It's a gymnastics cheerleading and tumbling gym that I opened in June of 2021. We're home to the area's first and only USASF cheerleading competition team, a USAG competition gymnastics team, and the official practice facility of Minot High Gymnastics. I reached out to Visit Minot when we hosted our first event, Rebel Roundup. They assisted me with coaches' gifts, website, hotels, that kind of thing, to get people to want to come to our first event because we were a brand-new gym, and it worked out really well. Then with a lot of help and encouragement from Visit Minot, we were given the nudge to bid for the 2023 USA State Gymnastics Championships, and we got that bid. In the past, it's always been given to bigger gyms that have been around a while, and it's been over 10 years since we've been able to bring it to Minot. So the funds provided for this event is allowing us, a small gym, to support more than 500 athletes and showcase Minot to hundreds of people that are going to come into town with their athletes. With events like these comes enthusiasm for gymnastics and being involved in a program that builds confidence, character, and pride in oneself and community. And these funds, the support and the close relationship that we've made with Visit Minot will give us the chance to continue to grow and provide programs for the kids and young adults that we have here in Minot. With funds raised through this state championships event, we'll be able to purchase new equipment and materials to keep our programs fresh and innovative. And as we look forward to the future, we hope to be able to host more events like this. We could host the USASF Championships. There's a ton of opportunities for us. And then someday, we would like to build our own facility so that we can have space for more kids and offer more programs here in town. So, thanks.
Thank you for your patience here. I'm Max Weppler, and Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight a little bit. I'm here to represent Rodeo Minot and the Badland Circuit Finals, which we probably bring to Minot every year. There's 13 circuits in the United States, and the Badland Circuit switches compasses North and South Dakota is the circuit that we represent. Each year, we try to do bigger and better things, and Stephanie has definitely helped us along that line to how to take our event to a new level. We're limited to 108 contestants each year, and that's set up by the National... The Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame or the Pro Rodeo Association is all that we can have is 108. And so we can't add additional contestants. What we can do is add different events. We brought in a bearback riding event. We brought in barrel racing. We brought in team roping. We brought in breakaway roping as subsidiary events to try to help us grow it. And this year, we've had another event that we had Visit Minot help us with is our Thursday night, we had a back number party, which we called it. It was for all the contestants and their families. We invited them to Minot a day early. The... Out of 108, there was only three that didn't come to Minot for that. They had other events, college commitments, other reasons that they couldn't be here. But out of 108, we had 105 of them were here. They paid for an extra night of their motel out of their pocket to be here that night, and it really went over well. We had... We served 550 people out at the fairgrounds, and we had dueling pianos here. It was just a nice event, and it was all paid for by Visit Minot and by Rodeo Minot Committee, and... But very well attended, and will continue to do that. But that... We try to take advantage of bringing as many people as we can. Like I said, there's 108 contestants. Only two of them are from Ward County. The rest of them are all across North and South Dakota, some outlying states, Wyoming, some into Canada. But only two are local residents. The 106 are from outside of this area. So it really does bring in a group of people from outside. I know we had over 400 motel rooms that we utilized. We filled several motels in town. Stephanie was a big help in securing additional motels for us. We kept running up, "Sorry, we're full, we're full." She got on the phone, she found us additional rooms, and very well appreciated. So please keep this going. It just... It's good for our event, and it's got to help other events if they... Stephanie, if you'll allow her to work with them and to bring these other events to town, and she'll help however you ask her to. Thank you.
Sorry, we had our Christmas party, so I barely made it in. But Jeremy Feller, before we had worked together, I had a youth basketball tournament. I have three daughters, so we just ran a girls' tournament, of course, and had 30-some teams. And I got with Stephanie, and we talked about, well, she was pushing me to add a boys' basketball to it, too. And I said, "Well, what's my motivation?" I, you know, it's twice the expenses, twice the work. It's hard to find officials. And long story short, we combined, we had 81 teams. So we went from 30-some, 35-ish, to 81 that next year. So unfortunately, that 30% growth kind of hurt me because I should have capped it. It's like, no, I'm kidding. But we had 81 teams, and we had to rent additional gyms, so it was definitely beneficial for that this year. We had a little different help. We had 77 teams this year back. The funding this year mainly, we got some bag tags for the kids and all the 70... About 10 kids per team, so about 700-plus bag tags that the kids mostly put on their bags that are having a Visit Minot logo, the upcoming Minot State events we're doing. We're also getting bag tags to get the Minot State logo on hopefully hundreds of kids' backpacks, so when they're going around, they're helping advertise for our community. So our Minot State events coming up here at the end of the month, we have four days of basketball now. We have seven varsity games and JV games on the 27th, 28th, and then five girls' games on the 29th and 30th. And then actually, I haven't even told her yet, but we added five more games on the 30th of varsity. So that's a whole lot of high school basketball in the city of Minot for those days, so... Which Minot... Visit Minot Stephanie has helped greatly with. Lastly, my daughter did volleyball travel the other year, and her first year doing that, we got our schedule, and it was James Stone, it was Bismarck, it was, you know, out of state, kind of like our basketball was, where you could go to Bismarck every weekend and play in a tournament if you wanted. And so we ran a volleyball tournament the first year, and with their help, we were able to secure some hotels and all that stuff, too. And the biggest thing for me, the hardest thing for me for basketball in December, officials with Visit Minot's help, I was able to give an incentive. If you did six games for me, you got a little bonus. You got paid for seven. If you did 10 games for me, you got a $50 bonus. And without that, filling 130 reffing shifts times two, 260 shifts, is kind of hard to do when girls are playing. Class A's opening weekend, class B boys want scrimmages. So it's hard to find people, and without those extra incentives to pay those officials, it would have been hard. This year, we kind of selfishly, you know, kept it going. Like I said, with the 77 teams, and we're still able to add those bonuses. But without her help, we probably wouldn't have added the boys, and we would have just kept doing a girls' tournament because, like I said, I got three daughters, so I could talk for 10 minutes, but I'll save you the time, so...
And you know, I guess I really appreciate their feedback, certainly, but I... All the... The hard work isn't done in our... In the Visit Minot office. The hard work is done with those guys, with people like that, and they are the best example of, you know, some of the partners that we get to have. The other person that isn't here tonight because she's at home sick is Tanya Parker. She is our Director of Team Events and Meetings, and she's the one who's working with these guys on a daily basis and making all the phone calls. And so I... She would have been here and was kind of bummed she couldn't be, so certainly wanted to thank her for that. As we jump into, you know, a preview of 2023, if you want to go to the last slide, Derek. And so this is a, you know, an overview of kind of the entire program. But, you know, for 2023, right now, we believe that the economic... Hold on, I lost my notes here. There we go. We believe in 2023, the economic impact. As a reminder, when we talk about, you know, the two segments, there was... Segment one was getting Visit Minot stronger so that we could do the things that these guys are talking about, right? The good news is, is we have had some really... We've gained a lot of traction. We've built the infrastructure we need to build in order to be able to do a better job moving forward. So what you see here is the 2021, 2022, 2023, what we said we... Or what we budgeted, and then what we actually build. We committed to a $10 million economic impact right now, and that's just for Tier One and Tier Events. If we count Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, it's more in the $13 million range. But, you know, in a year from now, we'll be a whole lot more confident about that. What I can tell you today is I believe with a lot of confidence that we will get to that $10 million, and I believe it will have cost the city of Minot about $390,000 to get there. We've learned a lot in this process, and not everything has been successful. We just... The summer, we were going after an event for 2026, and we found out in about September... September that we didn't get it. We were in the top two, but it doesn't really matter who comes in second place. We didn't get it. You know, we're also in negotiations right now with another event that is going to be here likely in '25 or '26. We think it's going to be 2026. Probably be able to tell you a little bit more about that next year. The other thing is for 2024, you know, that things that aren't included on here, but this program has built that. And that's the thing that I really want to shine the light on, is that, you know, state dance, we locked in for '24, '25, and '26. Minot State has a big wrestling tournament that's in, that's in 2024 as well. That's right, that's in 2024 as well. So we've had a few tournaments, actually, that we've, that we've not been able to land. But you know what? We are trying, and we've, we've had some decent success and certainly have more work to do. I think that sums up what I wanted to chat about. I assume there's questions?
Any questions? Scott?
Well, thank you, Ms. Shane Rock, for the presentation and data and the hard work. What, so we talked a lot about, obviously, the sports type tourism, if you will. I, I also have had a couple of conferences that I've been part of that have returned to Minot. A lot of them used to kind of bounce between the four major cities, and oil boom happened here, and, and they stopped coming for a decade or, or more. Efforts you've had in that, in bringing those back, and how is that going? And, and I guess, yeah, your thoughts?
Great question. Thank you. Mayor Ross and Alderman, Burlingame. Yes, we, we are still working on those. There's a couple of things about meetings. One of the other things, a component to Tanya's job is meetings. Meetings have changed quite a bit in the past 10 years. You know, Minot wasn't in the game for a few years, like, like you mentioned, and you're, and you're right. So we lost some of those relationships. We're working really hard at building those back, and have made some good progress. But there's a few things that have changed, obviously with the pandemic, and all of us are really tired of hearing that. But there are less conferences, and the conferences that do have aren't as big as they used to be. We are seeing consumer behavior of, a lot of us don't want to have to go if we don't have to. And so we're, we're seeing that conferences are shrinking pretty much by a third across the board. So yes, we are still, and, and that's a whole nother list that I, we are happy to provide you of the, the conferences that we work with. That's a, that's a whole nother sheet. Did that answer you?
Yeah, thank you. That's all I had.
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments, I guess. So if anybody does have any questions, I don't know if Steph wants to sit down. But, but again, I was, I sit on the Visit Minot Board. I, I sit on the Tourism Recovery and Resiliency Board that helps go through the applications for these events. And, and I actually was on the, part of the meetings that brought this, this program into fruition, I guess, working with city staff and working with Visit Minot and the concept that, that we had with this. And this was what we perceived as, conceived as somewhat of a pilot program to see how this went, right? We didn't know. That's why we did a three-year agreement. We needed to have somewhat of a sample size. One year wasn't enough to see if this works. Two years, we're starting to get a pretty good picture. And then when we project out what we've, what we have on the books, and what we hope to have on the books, some of the events that Steph alluded to, I think this program is working. I think this program is seeing a return on the investment for taxpayers, for small businesses, for hotels, for, for, for the community facilities. We're getting people here. I think it's a program that needs to be maintained upon the sunsetting of funding. Right now, we're looking at not expel, expending all of our funding, but exceeding our goal of a $10 million impact. I think that, you know, in, in the past, Minot has always been, we look at the data at the Visit Minot, at our Visit Minot meetings or the TRF meetings, we see these two spikes. We've always seen these two spikes on an annual basis, and it comes in July when the fair comes, and then it comes when the Housfest comes. And, and that data, Steph is more than willing to share with businesses around town, when to advertise, like the representative of the Wiseman's Rodeo came and, and stated that that data is invaluable to these events. Where do we need to market? When do we need to market? What resources do we have to market? And Visit Minot above and beyond funding lends itself as a marketing partner. So again, I think there's, there's such a desire for not only to make those events, such as the Housfest or the fair, successful, but we need to have things every weekend. Businesses can't survive on just a, a, a 10-day period in July. They can't survive on a 10-day period or a four-day period in October when the Housfest comes down. We need to have people coming through our community on a weekly, bi-weekly basis that has an impact of $734,000, like the North, North Dakota Fire School, like the Minot Area Volleyball Tournament of $135,000. That's how we help our businesses. That's how we take these sales tax dollars and put them to work and let Visit Minot carry out this objective for us as a community to make sure that we aren't looked over for events. Jeremy Feller led, mentioned that you could stay in Bismarck all weekend, every weekend, sometimes twice a weekend, and go to a, a basketball tournament, go to a wrestling tournament, go to a volleyball tournament. Minot deserves to have those things, too. We have nice facilities here. We've invested in those facilities, whether it be the bubble at the Dome, whether it be what, what the Minot Parks do with the, the area's softball complexes. I come from a wrestling background. Having the, the super regional tournament here in Minot is a huge lift. It's something that doesn't happen. There's always a reason to not come to Minot. And there's always a reason given to not come to Minot. There's never a legitimate reason to not come to Minot because we can host these events. We can roll out the red carpet for these, for these spectators, for these, these participants, and make them feel welcome here. Visit Minot, it was a huge lift to get the, the Girls National ACHA Hockey Tournament here, and we heard nothing but rave reviews from all of the participants, from all of the officials that came here and said, we would love to come back to Minot. Another thing that lends to this, and as I think through these, and we, we try to see how can we make this program better, I think these are things that Minot, when people look and organizations look at Minot to host these events, they say, we'd love to have it in Minot. You have the hotels, you have the area, you have the population. You don't have this. You don't have that. We don't have enough ice. We don't have enough sheets of ice. Things like that, that I think can lend and help the park board make better decisions, can help the city make better decisions, can help athletic organizations like Rebel Athletics make better decisions. Where do we, where do they need to invest their resources as well to make these events better, so that we can not be overlooked by high school athletic associations, by the NCAA for when these events do come to town? And I, maybe I'm speaking out of school. I'm just a board member on Visit Minot, but maybe I'm speaking online, and Steph doesn't make any more money if this happens. She doesn't get a raise. In fact, it's a heck of a lot more work for Visit Minot to do these lifts. So if Visit Minot were to entertain the idea of carrying this program forward and making sure that this program is funded above and beyond what this agreement states, I'd love for Visit Minot to, to continue to carry a program like this because I don't think this is something that we can do and invest in for three years and then pull the rug out from some of these organizations that are being lifted up from some of these resources. So again, I, I, I think that, I think this program has been successful. I think it'll continue to be successful under the leadership of Visit Minot. And again, I'm not, that's everybody else at Visit Minot, I'm on the board, but everybody else there is great. So, but like I say, I, I think it's something that needs to be looked at. This is something that, that came out of our sales tax for economic development. It's something like we would do with MACEDC's agreements, Service Base and Planning Council. Instead of shifting some of this money into the, and we'll get into this in our next topic with the Magic Fund. But I think if the city on an annual basis can divert some funds towards Visit Minot for carrying out these activities, I think it is more than worth it. I think it's something that we should have been doing a long time ago, and I think it's something that we need to continue doing longer to the future, so.
Thank you, Paul. Just my, my opinion on it, just looking at it, I think it's a huge testimony that there's so many new events, so many solid new events on that, on that first slide. That's what really kind of took my breath away. And really, what that does to me is it sends a message to other youth groups, other youth sports groups, that it empowers them. It, it gets them looking at, hey, what can our group do? What can our group do? You know, what can our, our softball group or basketball group do to help grow these types of events in Minot? Because we have, like Paul said, we have a lot of weekends and a lot of weeks in the summer and, and winter and spring that, you know, the town's not, there's not a lot of buzz going on. So there's a lot of opportunity there. Steph, just a question. Is there any talk about creating like a youth sports commission or anything like that to help you do what you guys are doing?
Great question. Thank you, Mayor Ross. Yes, there has been some discussion on that. What we've done so far is we've got the Minot Tournament Committee, and that's a, that's the group that helps do all of the North Dakota High School activities, events. And then we've got our Tourism Recovery and Resilience Committee that looks at this funding. At our last TRF, or the committee funding where we talked about this, that was a discussion that said, what does this look like moving forward? And, you know, as this grows, we're, we're gonna need more infrastructure within the community to really be able to support this, to continue the growth, right? So, yes, yep, it has been, it has been, it's on the radar. There's been a few discussions. There's a lot more that need to happen. Truly, it, it takes vision, and it takes funding and, and all of those things. At this point, we focused on, let's get our foundation going. Let's move in the right direction. And, and we are moving in the right direction. There's still plenty of work to do, and I believe that is going to be the next phase.
Would, it looks like you're, the leftover from the, the billing to what's left over is about 90,000. Would that help create a youth sports foundation or a commission?
Yeah, of, of course, that, that funding would help. What I do believe is the bigger lift is figuring out really what that looks like. I'll, I'll tell you what, from two years ago when I was here, what I thought this program would look like and what it looks like is very different. I mean, the outcome is, is similar as far as the economic impact, but how we got there is quite different than what I anticipated. And what I, what I did not anticipate truly is how our role with every one of the groups here tonight, every role that we have, it's different because every group, every sport has a very different need. So when I, when you answer, would $90,000 do it? Of course that would, of course that would help. But I believe the, the bigger lift is figuring out what's next and how to best accomplish that. And then, like we have in the last two years, made some mistakes and learned from them and, and adjusted and kept moving forward. And that's really what needs to happen, is the time and the effort to make it happen.
So you're saying we all can learn a little bit, huh?
I know, I've learned a lot in the past two years and have a ways to go.
Thank you.
I have one more. So would it be realistic, desirable, like to, because I like, what was Paul's talking about? Perhaps in the next few months, come to us with a proposal about what, you know, this would look like for the next, you know what I mean? Like holding, we have that 90, you know what I mean? And just what, you know, figuring it out instead of just, you know, here's, here's a bit, here's a bit, with a, with your board, a, a plan of how we continue this and what that cost would look like and the deliverables will be. And, I mean, I'd be, you know, happy to have that discussion.
Sure. Yes. That, that, that was on the, I guess, the intent, or I got, that was, the intent is, okay, what's next after this? So essentially, Visit Minot in 2023 won't retain any funding from the city of Minot. It's all passed through dollars. And that was the way the program was written by design, right? So, yes, we will be back late spring or whatever to come back with that.
I think what probably works best, and this is in my opinion, is if we make this a part of the budget discussion. And make this, let's set this up just like we do with MACEDC, Service Base and Planning Council, through the sales tax dollars, and we make this a part of that discussion and have a enterprise agreement set up with, with the organization. And have, and again, there has to be deliverables, there has to be metrics that can be measured. Steph mentioned that we use conservative numbers, and I mean conservative numbers, to the point where I think the board even gets frustrated, Steph, we don't have, we know that these numbers are stronger than, than we show. But she, she errors on the side of, of conservative, so we, we let her go with it. But again, these numbers are impactful to our community. So again, I think that making this a part of the budget discussion is probably a, a better long-term scenario.
I like it.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
It's moving on to 10.2, the Magic Fund Guidelines.
So I have a, a motion, I mean, I'll be popular, but it's not, it's really not because of the time. But, I mean, the recommendations are waiting for the completion of legal review and input from the Magic Fund Steering Committee. So I'm wondering if it makes sense if we wait for those to happen before we have, and any changes coming from those two things, so that when these, these, the recommendations are brought to us, they're sort of clean and not, you know, the final recommendations instead of, you know, doing it right now and then getting legal review input and Magic Fund Steering Committee is like, why don't we do this? So I guess my motion would be to table this until those two, you know, until the completion of legal review and allowing, and the Magic Fund Steering Committee review and providing feedback.
Second.
Is it second by mark? Second by motion to table? Any discussion, Paul?
Just to be clear, the, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because that was the deadline given to this.
Right.
That hot committee, correct? So, yeah.
Yep.
I think, I think getting the legal review is, and getting all those i's dotted and t's crossed is fine with me.
Yeah, and I think there was that, you know, I mean, we have a, a new city attorney that is, I think, drinking from not a fire hose or a garden hose, but I think Harold said a pipeline at one time, so.
No, and I love that the deadline, I mean, I so appreciate the deadline being met. But with the recommendations being these two pieces, like, you know, let's just, you know.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, there's a motion to table and a second. Please call a roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgulah?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Motion to table pass. It's moving on to item 11 on the agenda. Let's start with liaison reports. And was there any other miscellaneous items to come before the council? If not, Carrie, why don't you?
Actually, I do, I'm sorry, I'm struggling to talk a little bit right now. On Wednesday night, let me get into details here quick because I closed it. Here we go. On Wednesday night at 7:00, kind of next to Citizens Alley behind, like Prairie Sky Breds in that area, there's a candlelight vigil for homeless persons' Remembrance Day. So I think it's a good opportunity. It's going to be cold outside for that, but guess what? It's cold if you're outside and it's homeless right now. So I think it's a good opportunity to kind of get together and honor that.
And it's always on that night because, just so folks know, that's the longest night of the year. And so that's, the whole nation marks it because of that. That was a little P.S., Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Anything else? If not, Carrie, start us with.
I have none. Ward County Planning Commission got deferred, so we're meeting tomorrow night, and the library's doing well.
Lisa?
Just briefly, I participated in the executive board meeting and the loan review committee meeting for Service Base and Planning Council. And I think that something of interest to all of us on the dais is that the BAH, the Business Accelerator Fund, that has twice been funded with Magic Fund dollars, is incredibly successful. Our most recent award of dollars was $780,000, and that was in the spring, and most of it has been loaned out. So anticipate that Service Base and Planning Council will be coming back to us because the program is going so well. And we already talked about this, but I attended two meetings related to the funding gap for the CTE, and we've already addressed it.
Steve?
The Commission on Aging meeting was canceled and postponed until January because of the storm. The Area Resource Council meeting was uneventful, except for the fact we have a new county emergency manager, Kelly Hogan, who used to be Jennifer's assistant. He's moved into the position full-time, so it's taking him some time to get used to that. And I did attend on behalf of the council, the Ward County 911 Committee Meeting meets quarterly, and we discussed the 911 center and how it's going to be improved and with the New City Hall Dispatch Center. Just as a bit of information, the, this central dispatch gets an average of 200 calls every day, 200 calls for service. That's a lot of individuals needing help. They operate, obviously, 24/7, and their annual budget is $2.8 million, which is a good chunk of money. They're expecting a significant improvement in the facilities in the New City Hall, and it looks like at this point, in terms of the moveover planning, they'll be moving last probably sometime around April or May after the other departments are in. departments are in. So that's interesting, one of those behind-the-scenes things that you take for granted, that really involves a lot of person power and a lot of money and a lot of planning, a lot of organization and engineering. So it's interesting being a part of that. So that was about it.
Thank you, Steve. Scott?
I was able to attend the first meeting of the Employee Benefits Wage Review Committee. Just kind of began that process, going through the personnel policy, looking at some issues. I think it's going to be a lot of work. It's kind of a heavy lift, but I'm looking forward to being part of that, so.
Thank you, Scott. Mark?
Again, relative to the Employee Wages and Benefits Committee, as Scott mentioned, we met on December 13th. Our next meeting will be on January 10th at 4:30 here in the chambers.
Thank you, Mark. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, Visit Minot, you all got an insight into what we're doing over there. The Renaissance Review Board, working through the pipeline, a couple of facade improvement program applications that are coming, that'll come before council at some point. And then also, the chamber hosted a area roundtable with legislative leaders, kind of leading up to the session here, that some city staff, as well as the mayor, were able to attend. I sat in on that as well. So that's what I got.
Thank you. And yeah, my liaison report was included in my mayor's report, so that is all. I just wanted, this is the last meeting of the year. I want to wish members of the council, new members and old members alike, wish you a Merry Christmas and a very happy New Year. I'm looking forward to 2023. I think we've got some great things ahead for the city of Minot. And I want to wish the department heads and all the employees of the city of Minot a very, very Merry Christmas. I hope you all get to spend time with your families and have a happy and safe New Year. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.